This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, March 26th. This is an executive budget proposal and budget hearing. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, as we like to do, we're going to start with Brighton Believer Awards, so I'm going to start with you, Dr. McGowan, at the podium.
Thanks so much, Mr. Davis, and again, thanks to the board for recognizing these incredible members of our community. Tonight is no exception. Again, the Brighton Believes Council accepts nominations all the time for those in our community that demonstrate the character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. You can nominate anybody on the website, bcst.org. Students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, community members, please join in the fun of recognizing great, great people in our community, like two people tonight. And the first person I'd like to ask to come on up here for recognition, Julie St. Germain, a former teaching assistant at 12 Corres Middle School. Kathryn, come on up, and Mrs. Edmonds. Nominated by Counselor Kathryn Lebel and student Jada Phelps. Is Jada here too? Jada, come on up. Just think about this, how great it is that a student has nominated a staff member, a former staff member. Really love that, Jada. Thanks for taking the time to do it. Kathryn wrote, "Julie is known as Miss Julie to the students. She is warm, enthusiastic, and loving. She has a kind and generous heart and lets her students know how important and valued they are every day. Walking down the hall, it is clear that she has made connections with students. She greets them by name and knows their hobbies, interests, and often attends their athletic games. She earns respect by showing it to others. Miss Julie has made a difference with many students in our building." Jada wrote, "Miss Julie is not only an amazing TA, but an amazing person. She's nice, kind to everybody, helpful, and a wonderful person to be around. She is funny and an industrious worker. She deserves this award for all the work that she does for our school. We could not agree more. Thank you so much." Hey, Jada, don't go too far. Jada, come on back up, please. Again, with Principal Danielle Edmonds and Counselor Kathryn Lebel, Jada Phelps, a TCMS student who we're so proud of, and also a teaching assistant, Sandra Miller, I don't seem to smell it here tonight, nominated by all of these wonderful people. Mrs. Edmonds wrote, "Jada is a pretty amazing student who stands out for many reasons. For the past two years, Jada has served as an amazing ambassador in our building. She supports so many of our new students with the transition to a new school. She also volunteers in our 12-1-4 classroom to support students with special needs, and participates in Best Buddies and a few other clubs and activities. Without prompting, she took on a mentor role as a member of the Fall Musical to support a student who probably would not have been able to participate without her. We even let Jada come out to Outdoor Ed to support sixth graders, which we would never do because she is that good with helping and interacting with peers. If we could, we would literally hire her as a TA." Jay's thinking like, okay, then, why not? What are we waiting for? Ms. Miller wrote, "I witnessed Jada display great maturity, leadership, and kindness each and every day. She is always supporting teachers by assisting students of all levels with the task at hand. She is always kind and respectful. Jada is a constant support to everyone at TCMS. Thank you for being an example of what everybody should be all of the time. We are so proud of you, Jada."
I'll also note that Kathryn Lebel, your sweatshirt is earning great regard up here, so really well done.
Do you take commission orders?
Thank you. Two great awards tonight. That was outstanding. We'll proceed forward with the meeting. First off, you all have received the agenda. Are there any changes or edits to that agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? You've also received the March 12, 2024 minutes. Any questions, edits, or comments with regards to those minutes? Motion to approve those minutes as received?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? We also have, as we do with every meeting, the opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak? Lovely. We're going to call Dr. McGowan back up to talk about the executive budget proposal.
This is also traditionally a good moment to say to people, oh, Kathryn wants to stay, though, but everybody but Kathryn.
I had confidence. I had confidence.
Thank you. Shocked that people are not interested in this.
I didn't have the word "executive budget proposal" out of my mouth, and they were all up and moving.
Shocked that they don't want to stay. I'm equally shocked that the principals did not slip out at the same time. All right. So this is after the entire process, and we'll walk through that. We've now landed at this, the official executive budget proposal to you, really unchanged from what we presented two weeks ago at the last meeting. Really important to point out the key budget guidelines that we start with in the fall, when the entire process really begins in earnest, but as we point out often, this is happening all year long. The budget guidelines that you set for us were to make sure that our recurring expenses were funded with sustaining revenue. In other words, thinking about the current situation that we are experiencing with the expiration of federal funds, we wanted to make sure that our expenditures now could be afforded when that revenue changes, and the short and long-term changes potentially to foundation aid formula. Wanted to make sure we could really prepare for having those high-impact programs that we've established endure into the future and have continuity, even when those funds are disappearing. Wanted to make sure that we have the appropriate resources and effort to support the execution of our action plans as part of the blueprint in each of our priority areas: mental health, wellness, academic excellence, student-family experience, staff support and collaborative culture, safety and planning for the future. We also want to make sure that we're recognizing the current economic climate, changing needs, and that the board recognizes the importance of prioritizing resources, reevaluating opportunities for optimization, where we can be most efficient, where we could potentially reduce or consolidate without affecting program for our students. Wanted to make sure as part of the guidelines that we prudently plan for long-term investment in our facilities, evidenced again by a very positive vote, support of our community this past February around Phase II of the current capital project, and comply with the New York State Property Tax Cap, understanding its long-term impact on financial planning. Certainly has been a priority in our community. In terms of the calendar, we started again formally with these budget guidelines approved by you back in September, have given you updates throughout, gathered community feedback throughout, and are at the proposal stage. Again, the annual meeting, the budget vote, happens on May 21st. From here, we have the feedback from you offered on the 9th, so in the meeting two weeks from now, if there's questions, if we need to dig further into that. Hopefully, on the 9th, we won't have to make any adjustments, but that will be the time to do that. The state budget is not settled yet. We expect everything in this budget to remain as presented, regardless of what happens there, but we've made assumptions in that, so we want to make sure we're open to any changes we need to make, and then the annual budget hearing is on May 7th. Again, the vote on the 21st.
Just a quick comment, because I happened to be on a panel discussion last week for prospective board members, and I made the comment that the budget process is a 12-month process. We talk about it all year, so I appreciate this calendar, because it starts in September when we get up again, and we talk about it all year. So I appreciate the calendar, sort of talking about the amount of thought. As a board, we are responsible to set the rate for our town, so that's an incredibly important responsibility that we have, and we take it very seriously.
No, I think that's a great point. If you even think of some of the other landmark financial events that aren't listed right here, that really make it that 12-month process. At the end of the year, you approve the designation of funds for reserves based on the expenditures this year. You receive regular financial reports. In August, you will set the tax rate based on the assessments that we get in and the approved budget from the community. But really, the blueprint and the strategic plan, again, if you go back to those guidelines, drives this work also, which that work is done, you know, really June through August as well. So determining the work that we're going to be doing has a big impact on the plan, and evaluating the success of programs and what we're spending our money on plays a big role in that as well. The budget priorities, again, really kind of to summarize, are minimizing the tax impact, ensuring that we have the right resources available, maintaining our fiscal stability, and providing the right support for new and innovative programs. Summary-wise, in terms of the expenditures going into next year, and where they break down in the biggest buckets, what the increases are, salaries across, spending on all salaries, not individual salaries, the total amount spent will go up 3.7%. Employee benefits, just one tenth of a percent. BOSI's costs are going up over 12%, supply services over 9%, debt transfer over 8%. In some of those areas in particular, you can see the impact of inflation that we're experiencing, like everybody is in their household budgets as well. The use of reserves and updates to income and revenue very specifically, I'd like to just point out a few of these important numbers. One, at the top, you can see the sales tax amount going up next year, great, and the investment income also going up. We can't count on those every year. Those are pretty significant increases. But the key numbers, state and federal aid, going up $1.8 million or 6%. The proportion of spending is 1.9%. In other words, that revenue would allow for an increase in spending of 1.9%. But these two key numbers in the middle, the use of reserves, are important to point out. Using $1 million in reserves and 2.7 in appropriated fund balances really, in some ways, accommodating for any potential changes in foundation aid, but thinking forward to increases in two particular areas, transportation and special education tuitions, that we get aided on the year after. So being able to utilize reserves and essentially pull that revenue a year forward before we get reimbursed the year after is helpful in being able to balance this budget with the right amount of revenues for expenditures. The total being nearly $105 million or 4.8% increase. Again, that's in revenue coming in next year. How that breaks down in particular areas, it's just also important to point out to look at the history over time, from the bottom bar, which is 2001, 2021, 22, to 24, 25, all the way at the top. You can see a pretty significant growth, really, like $9 million, almost $9 million, over that period of time in foundation aid. And I remember going back to those foundation aid conversations we had for many, many years when we were unfunded. Boy, wouldn't it be amazing if we got to that number and what we could do with that? Well, it is amazing, and what we could do with it is pay our bills. In other words, at that same time, we've seen dramatic increases in costs, both due to transportation, other outside placement and tuitions, and costs across the board, and that people have experienced in their daily lives as well. And that's really one of the biggest challenges that we've seen. And you can see where some of that revenue has increased, which shows you the cost increased, particularly on that transportation aid and the excess cost aid. When you see those go up, it means there's a corresponding spend that goes up as well because they're reimbursed. The property tax cap calculation, again, the formula that's given to us by the state really just shows you that at the end of the day, our tax cap number is 1.81% and the overall, I'm sorry, 1.88% growth from the tax levy base, and that would allow for just, if it was just up to that number, only an increase of 1.1% in spending, which would lag far behind what our expenditures are just rolling over one year to the next with no changes to expenditures. The summary of growth in revenue versus expenditures is important to take a look at, too, the new revenue opportunities. So where we are in terms of tax levy, foundation aid, expense-based aid, other revenue, and use of reserves, and where that comes into play relative to the bottom bar, the estimated increase in expenditures. And you see that pretty large chunk is tuition-mandated services at the beginning, contract wages benefits is always going to be a significant amount of money for us, but then these other pieces around new positions for class size, mental health support, debt service, and other inflationary factors. That red bar on top, again, important to point out, we always need to keep an eye on our use of reserves and how that supports our expenses over a period of time, and make sure that we can sustain that. The levy increase compared to CPI, also important to point out, tax levy on the bottom, CPI or the Consumer Price Index on the top, and it shows you by year, but that small amount of levy growth for us, 1.88%, pales in comparison to the CPI increase of 4.1%. So in other words, inflation is going up much faster than our ability to raise that revenue through the tax levy.
And that's by design in the tax cap levy formula?
Exactly.
Because that multiplying factor is 2% or the CPI, whichever is lower.
Right. For a long time, people said the 2% property tax cap. Well, it's not that. I mean, it would be higher for us if it was actually that for us.
And we can see corresponding, that when the CPI is high, the tax levy is low.
Correct. Exactly. Which seems like literally a double-edged sword. Just some headlines here I'd like to point out, because we talked about stability and what's happening here, and a big priority for you is providing that stability. You will continue to hear stories like this from across the state, and these are from everywhere, from Saratoga to the Orchard Park area, Rome, Berlin Central School District. The headlines, right? Rome School Board implored not to cut teachers. Schools looking at layoffs, larger cuts, the harder it is to spare personnel. Berlin, multi-million dollar budget deficit. Budget cuts cause concern for New York school districts. Stories everywhere, big reductions in force, Orchard Park, Hamburg, districts like ours in the Buffalo area. My point in sharing this with you is this is what's happening around us, yet we're presenting a budget to you that is relatively flat relative to positions. So some small reductions in parts of positions to actually fund other positions that will have a big impact for kids and to implement new programming, relative to and comparable to districts like ours who didn't look at it maybe the same way or have different fiscal challenges. I don't want to throw stones at anybody else. Just want to point out the stability that we're really trying to create, but that you have been part of leading for a very long time now, to keep that smooth over a period of time, ability to innovate, add new programs, but to be very fiscally conservative and careful so that we don't run into this situation. So we appreciate that, and of course, lose leadership has so much to do with that. Just to point out a couple of numbers for you, we're unable to hire in the middle column for two particular positions, two and a half, actually, in the teacher of depth, teacher visually prepared, but we will contract for that service through BOSI, so you see that reduction. Then you can see some different changes, a class size adjustment of two positions at the elementary level to keep class sizes low, that's an addition. We're looking at a four-person increase at the middle level for an ASPIRE program, which will extend the current program that we have at the high school into the middle school, support students with a very specific need. But how that comes about is important. It's not adding four new positions. That's looking at consolidation of a special education position, class size adjustments, enrollment adjustments relative to the music program, not a cut in program, very important to keep pointing that out, restructuring of the academic intervention program, and then looking also at the elective opportunities at the high school, making sure kids still get the same opportunities, but maybe with less sections and slightly larger class sizes, but not impact the opportunity for our students. All of that is done, not because somehow we're taking that money to the bank, somehow we get to, you know, buy new vans for the district, nothing like that. It is entirely done so that we can invest in another program that is very targeted at a group of kids that need that particular support. So that's that more efficient, effective use of resources. We use the term often, pruning somewhere to be able to plant somewhere else. On the bottom right-hand side, it shows you the comparison of positions over time. The overall change in allocations is just about a plus-two in terms of positions. So we adjusted the budget this year. The final number of people we're at was 675.78. We'll look next year at being at 677.76. So where you're hearing again about reductions other places, here you're looking at a slight increase in force. And with 675 employees, that's a small, small number, but a more targeted way to get at that. What comes up often around this class size conversation, how we're allocating our resources, is particularly around enrollment, and people curious about enrollment and how we predict enrollment. These predictions have been very, very accurate over a period of time. We post all this on the web, which avoids me reading all the numbers at you. But I do want to point out what's most important to notice in this, is the number of sections relative to the year before when the grade level moves up and where we're adding. So you can see at grade three and at grade five, we'll have 12 sections next year, and where does that compare to the previous years? So where we were at in grade one, 19.5 kids per section this year on average, right, with 13 sections. We can go to 12 sections next year and only see a slight increase, up to 21.4 when they go into second grade, from the first grade to the second grade. When we look at grade two, we have 11 sections. We'll go then up to 12 sections. We will go to 21.2, and if we didn't do that, they would be far larger. In grade four, we're at 11 sections. In grade five, they will go up to 12 sections so that they can stay at 21.5. So it just shows you again, when they go to the next grade level, why we're making the adjustments we are. And on the right-hand side, it shows you if we were additional, an addition of another teacher, how big they would, or how much smaller they would get, and if we would take one away, how much larger they would get. Looking at each of those, we wouldn't want to be in that range, in the 23-plus, as we get into the higher grades in the upper elementary area. The ASPIRE program that I mentioned to you, and those pieces of positions that we've now been able to combine to add this program at the middle school, really comes down to targeting our support to students who have some very specific needs. They, if you go to the Schools to Watch rubric, which, really excited to let you know, we've been re-designated again. Congratulations, Mrs. Edmonds, Mrs. Chadwick, Mrs. Principal Brooks. This is really, really great news. And the rubric from that evaluation really indicates that we need to be looking at what we do to specifically support our kids and how we develop programs around that. And so on the right-hand side, it really explains what TCMS can achieve through this program. Common planning time for interdisciplinary team and grade-level department. On two of the teams, each core teacher will teach four regular sections: ELA math teachers, a fifth section devoted to AIS, social studies, science teachers, and exploratory together, and students would be in this course every other day to address a specific curriculum that includes habits of mind, 20% time, et cetera. On a third team at each grade level, each core teacher will teach four sections of content, and then a smaller ASPIRE-like section to give very specific contention. And it's really an alternative instructional model at seventh and eighth grade that will support kids beyond what they're getting in the traditional school setting. In other words, making schools smaller for a group of kids with smaller class sizes, 10 or fewer, intensive support, et cetera. And really, a large component of the model looks at intentional family engagement practices as well to support students at all levels. So we're really excited about the opportunity to add that program. These are the points of pride that we like to make sure we're letting our community know that they can be thinking about relative to the investment they are making. I think it's really interesting to think about the budget as a numeric expression of our values and our mission in the district. And for the investment to be viewed as, what are you getting then also for making that investment? Well, the investment is yielding a very, very high graduation rate, 95%, 99% earning a Regents diploma last year, and 71% of our kids graduating with advanced distinctions. 73% graduating in 2023 took at least one AP exam, and 88% plan to attend a two- or four-year school. Nichte rankings are very high, number one district in both Rochester and upstate New York in 2024, a Blue Ribbon School at the high school in 2018, and again, TCMS, I just found out, so not even updated here, re-designated once again this year as a Schools to Watch. Our athletic teams, there are 72 teams with 1,500 roster spots. We are a nice little school of excellence. Our music program continues, we continue to be a community rated best for music education in both instrumental and vocal music, offered four through 12, 1,600 students participating, which is really just amazing. The number of kids is listed, of course, on the left-hand side, and the number of our staff that make this happen statistically is really, really amazing. And all of the other rankings and award, including gap closing performance awards, which really is so important to us. When we look at our graduation rate, it's not just for one group of students, but it is for all students, and tremendous growth for groups and students in marginalized groups. Around diversity, equity, and social, emotional learning, we are fully implemented in terms of an SEL Credit Council Counsel Act with full counselor support. The second step program at French Road with social justice lessons as well, hosting facilitation at the teacher pipeline to further diversify our teaching staff as well, has really been a great focus for us. Our school-based equity teams continue to work hard on improving our work in DEI and I, and our new hiring practices continue to help push us towards a more vibrant, diversified staff that better represents the students that we're working with. Relative to extra curriculum activities, there are over 85 clubs and a variety of academic competitions at the elementary, middle, and high schools. 2023 Crossroads Yearbook, top honors, again, the DECA Club, the Championships, Model UN Club. In other words, kids are doing really, really well, and it is happening because of the investment made by our community, year in and year out, yielding a really great result. Important to point out to people, because they're always wondering, what does this mean for my taxes, this investment, and how does that pan out? We are looking at equalization rate in Brighton and Pittsburgh. We've tried to talk about before what this means for people of 65% and 66% next year. In other words, people's values in their home are currently evaluated to be about 65% in Brighton, what the full value should be, and 66% in Pittsburgh. So the state makes this decision, looking at all of the assessed values and the market. The Office of Real Property Tax says, you know what, your values are not quite 100%, and so we need to make an equalization so that people in different taxing jurisdictions within the same district are paying their fair share relative to values in that town. We're pretty close in the two towns. This past year was 70% and 72%, but what that means is that in Brighton, the share of the total levy is 98%, 98 and a half percent, and the Pittsburgh properties are paying about 1.4%. The tax rate per thousand, a number that people always look at, is 27.55 in Brighton, 27.13 in Pittsburgh. So in Brighton, because of that equalization rate, to go back to that number, it is actually down 23 cents then in Brighton, and it's up $86 in Pittsburgh for 1.4% of the values overall. But it is because of that equalization rate that that happens in that way. The impact on tax rates, equalization in the tax levy, again, shows you that the tax bill specifically on a home value at $200,000, we're looking in Brighton at up 1.87% or $129, 3.18% or $213. I'm sorry, it's not $200,000. It's a home value at $250,000 overall. So that's, again, the change over time. The bottom line, trying to be sensitive to changes in the tax base and the equalization rate. Again, home value at $250,000. In Brighton, it's up $129 next year, and in Pittsburgh, it's up $213. Again, the equalization rate makes that tricky. Karen, I can tell you that I want to say something.
I'm just thinking about, I feel like the past three years, we've had some wild swings in the equalization rates. What, will that settle at some point?
Only a town-wide revaluation.
Which I would expect is probably not far off. So I don't know that the town has announced anything like that, but...
It makes your head spin sometimes to go through the equalization rate, because it has been so vastly different the past three years.
The tax is just the percentage of the levy that each town picks up, so it's really outside of the board's control.
Oh, 100%, but explaining that becomes somewhat difficult.
Yeah, and, you know, so I think that, a couple of things. One, people in the town have benefited from a skyrocketing value in their properties, right? Particularly people who have sold or who refinanced or are taking money out of their house. I mean, the fact that values are up is a good thing for folks. When you see 65%, it means those values have gone up and up and up and up, and basically the state is saying, okay, now you're really only, where your assessed value is only 65% of what your market value actually is because the market values have gone way up. So they're just trying to find a way to equalize that. What gets confusing for people is when the town does do the reevaluate, you know, and they're looking then at their property. Ideally, everybody's property would be assessed generally up to 100% at the same rate, because the town did a full reevaluate just not too many years ago, and some of us, perhaps because of personal experience, and some people at this table too, saw big jumps. Other people didn't see as many jumps, right, and they tried to find the right level for everybody. Now that they were at the right level, as values went up, you'd hope that everybody's value went up in an equal way. And when we go to set rates later on, our rate, we are only asking people for a levy amount, right, like a total dollar amount. If your home value is higher, your rate on every $1,000 of your value will be lower because we're only still cutting the same amount of money.
The pie is still the same.
The pie is still the same, right? But it gets confused. They go, oh, my gosh, my taxes are going to weigh up. No, we're still going to be, the rate will change in a corresponding way to account for that. So now that I've made it entirely way too confusing. The summary overall, though, again, we set out, if you go back to those original guidelines and the summary of those, we set out to minimize the tax impact, ensure that we had what we needed for kids, the right resources targeted to support students, and maintain our fiscal stability while supporting new innovative programs. We've, I think, as we've gone through where we've adjusted those positions over time, where we've stayed under the tax cap, and looked at our long-term stability, borrowing essentially from our reserves to capture aid that will be coming in in future years, and using some of that rainy day to level that out over time so that we're also not cutting programs that mean something for kids, it feels as though to us, as we're presenting it to you, that we've accomplished those objectives. In presenting you with a proposal that increases spending 4.76%, the tax levy then, that cap number of 1.88%, and really does reflect the investment that we're asking the community to make in students and in the work here in the district, in our blueprint priorities: mental health and wellness, academic excellence, student and family experience, staff support, collaborative culture, safety, and planning for the future. Can I answer any questions for you before I describe next steps?
No, I think we're good so far.
You really, you don't want to walk through equalization again, because I really love talking about it. I'm a very exciting guy. The only one that can make that more exciting is Lou Alamo, who probably does not want to talk about it. No, no, we're good. So our next steps will assess the final impact of the, the impact of the final state budget. It says April 1st.
It's not the fourth day?
You took the words out of my mouth. You know, I think it's really ironic, but it's hard to tell whether it'd be an on-time budget. With the holiday weekend approaching, sometimes that does not occur the way it should. However, we would say on- However, we would say on time, relatively on time, so in other words, early April probably, if it doesn't come in right on time, but we'll take a look before the next board meeting, be able to make those adjustments and explain those to you. We have the budget forum and adoption on the 9th, budget hearing again on the 7th, and of course, then the vote here in this building, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, hoping for Kiwanis food trucks to be out there as well, and lots of fun activities on campus. Before you say anything, I would like to, again, just take a second to thank Lou for his financial stewardship. And for all the budget makers here in this room who contribute to this too, because the process really happens and happens effectively because of, you know, Deanna Nelson's leadership, each of the principals, the assistant principals, I'm so glad they're here tonight to hear this too. They're the ones in this team that make all of this happen along with all of our staff. But in terms of figuring out the budget part of it, there's a lot of hard conversations, a lot of hard decisions that happen over months and months to get to this point. So thanks to all of them as well. Mr. Davis?
No, I was just going to comment that as much as we discuss working on the budget all year, your team works on the budget all year as well, so I appreciate you making note of that. Any questions from the board? All right, we'll keep our fingers crossed for an on-time budget and then a vote after that. Very excited about this next opportunity. It's great that we took a few minutes, or Dr. McGowan took a few minutes, to go through the points of pride, because all of those accomplishments are in part driven by the folks we're going to hear from in just a second, which are the vice principals. And I wasn't going to say that we're tired of hearing from the principals, we wanted something newer and exciting, because I felt like that would be okay. So we're just, we're incredibly happy to be able to hear from folks who are sometimes behind the scenes, but also sometimes in front of the scenes, making things happen. So thank you to all the vice principals for being here tonight, we're anxious to hear from you, and we're going to start with French Road and Shirley.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here tonight. March always feels like it'll be the longest month, but we had so much going on at French Road that I can't believe the month is almost over. But we'll go ahead and get started, make sure I'm clicking on the right thing here. All right, let's see, look at you. So we started the month, March 1st, with Read Across America Day. We had individuals from within the building, the district and the community come and read to our students. It's always an exciting day for our students and staff. Next year, we're really looking forward to collaborating with Mr. Green and hopefully have students from either TCMS or the high school come over and read to our students at French Road. Brighton Believes Day. This year, grade levels wanted to do, they each wanted to do their own project, and we were able to make this happen while supporting one local charity. This year, we partnered with Happy Birthday Cha Cha Cha. Happy Birthday Cha Cha Cha, I feel like I need something to, every time I say Cha Cha Cha. It's dedicated to bringing birthday joy to children in need. Our kids receive wrapped gifts and a bag full of goodies. This right here on the picture is Carrie Green, who runs Happy Birthday Cha Cha Cha. She's doing a livestream to all the classrooms before getting into all of the fun. Third grade, so third grade focused on making birthday cards. We were able to make over 300 birthday cards, which is amazing. And fourth grade, so fourth grade, they were the lucky ones to wrap all the gifts of the toys that we, that were donated, and they wrapped over 200 toys. And then fifth grade, fifth grade, they did a mac and cheese drive. They collected 675 packages of mac and cheese that are put into the goodie bags. They decorated note cards with positive messages that were put on each box. And then the most exciting part was that fifth grade lined up, they lined the hall with a mac and cheese domino before boxing them up to send them off to the charity. If you haven't seen the video, it's a quick video, it's on different social media platforms, please make sure you check it out, it's really cool. And of course, we want to give a huge, huge thanks to our PTSA, who helped deliver the items to classrooms and collect them after. Could you imagine 675 mac and cheese boxes delivered? So they were very, very helpful, we definitely needed that manpower. We also had a special visitor come present to our fourth graders. Perry Ground, who's right there on the bottom right-hand corner, is a Rochester native and an active member of the Anandaga tribe of the Harunoshani, which they learn about in fourth grade. Students, you'll see them here, they're, they have corn husk, and they're learning how to make dolls, which is a traditional craft of the tribe. And then, of course, the Festival of Ideas, it was great to see our first students participate. And then this month, for, in March, for our staff, faculty, our faculty meeting, we were focused on nurturing a sense of belonging at French Road by adopting an inclusive language protocol, which was presented by BOSIS. The purpose of the protocol is really to empower and give the tools to our teachers to respond to discriminatory language. By one, interrupting when they hear any biased remarks made by an adult or a student. Two, questioning the remark. BOSIS gave us sentence stems that, different sentence stems that we could use in different situations. And then three, educating and explaining why the remark was offensive. And echoing, for echoing, meaning supporting those that speak up. At the end, we were given different scenarios to practice implementing the protocol, and I'll say that we definitely received positive input from our staff, so we look forward to continuing this work. And dodgeball, so this year was better than last year, and next year, we will come bigger and greater, so watch out, Council Rock. And then finally, some dates, so our spring recess next week, and then the solar eclipse day, the 8th, which I did not put on here. We have our nicest lot testing, just the speaking portion, starting on the 15th through May 24th. We have computer-based ELA assessments, grades three through five on the 17th and the 18th. Superintendent's Conference Day, the 26th, and then we have a fourth and fifth grade chorus concert on April 30th. And with that being said, do you have any questions for me?
Well, first, I agree with you, March does always seem like the longest month, but it is April this Sunday, so you were right on both counts, so thanks. No, Ms. Wheeler, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments?
Great job.
Just a great job. Thank you very much. Fun going on across.
I definitely have a challenge, normally I'm like, I'm a little down, basically, as you have, as well.
Assistant Principal Schaefer.
All right. All right. Thank you so much for having me, I'm excited to share all of the fun that we have had at Council Rock over the last month. We also participated in Brighton Believes Day, and our kindergarten through second grade students all got to choose whether they did greeting cards for Woodside Manor in the Jewish home of Rochester, or if they braided shirts together and built dog toys for Lollipop Farm. We had a ton of cards made, and we're still working on finishing some of the dog toys. That was a little bit trickier, but they did a great job on both of those projects. These are a couple of our kindergarten students who really enjoyed illustrating those cards. We also have been working on that sense of belonging at Council Rock. It seems as though Mr. Tappan comes up with a fun idea every once in a while, so we made 150 miniature frogs around our building, and we had the staff members looking for them all throughout Leap Day. So that was a fun activity, the kids got into it. At one point, a student told me that they were going to win a scooter if they found all the frogs, that was not the case, but they were really motivated to find them. We had one staff member find 27 mini frogs, so Nurse Haley won a little prize for that. If you come into Council Rock, you'll notice that Ms. Lisa, our art teacher, gifted us with a ton of artwork from the years of her career. She framed all of the different projects that she has completed, and we came back from February break with a gift on our walls in the office. So if you come in, check out the new artwork in our front main office. I wanted to highlight one of the projects that is also in our main hallway. Our extended studies program has completed a biography project. Andrea Yaman has created this project, and the kids really went for it. They did research on different changemakers throughout history, they did three different biography projects, and then their final project was to create a dinner party invite and pick three different changemakers from throughout history that they would want at their dinner table. So it's a pretty cool project. You'll see in the morning the kids coming in and looking at the different changemakers throughout history. It's fun that they have connected those changemakers to a habit of mind, and it has really woven that piece that we work on every single day to different people throughout history. March is mindful March at Council Rock, so we have done different things for staff like yoga, meditation, and for the students, we provided videos each day, so the counselors send out a video to the classroom teachers, and everyone is doing a common meditation or guided thought practice each morning. It kind of helps ground you in that really long month of March. We also wanted to thank the PTSA, they have been amazing and a huge support at Council Rock. They provided a hydration station with different flavored waters and different things for our staff members last week. At each of our staff meetings, they provide snacks, and after a long day with kindergarten first and second graders, it is a nice little treat to come in before our community meetings. We also had a soup herbal party provided by the PTSA, they brought in different soups and chilies, and the teachers had lunch on the PTSA that day. We've also done spring pictures, which has been a great fundraiser for our K2 students. Another thing I wanted to highlight today was the technology Lunch and Learns that Katie Fallon has done for our students. She has really provided teachers a quick way to get a new app or a piece of technology into their classrooms, so she provides these about once a month, maybe once every other week, so that teachers can come in during their lunch hour, five, 10 minutes, get a quick technology tidbit, and they're on their way. She also provides that support in the classrooms, so they can set up times at that point as well. It's been fun to see the different technology that's being used in the classrooms that's coming straight from our Lunch and Learns. We have a really fun upcoming event at Council Rock. We've got the ice cream socials coming for kindergarten first and second grade. The most exciting piece of these three nights is that it's all local vendors. So we have the Hippo Campo bookstore coming for our book fair, and we have Nine Cone Cone as the supplier for ice cream, and then we'll also have open house in the classrooms, so families will be able to come and see all of the work that their students have completed. One other piece, we actually did win dodgeball, but I put adult in parentheses there, the seniors did definitely beat us. But we like to brag a little bit, and we do have the dodgeball, the golden dodgeball in our front office next to Renee Papalardo's desk, she likes to have that right there. So we had about 20 people participate, and it was a really, really great event that the seniors put on, that was awesome. Oh, there it is, see? Right in our front office. It was given, it was given, we did not make that, it was given to us.
Somebody's got a tie dye shirt on, though, who's that? Some Miss Lisa with a tie dye shirt?
Well, Miss Lisa was very excited, that's okay.
I'm just saying, as board representation.
Yeah. A couple events coming up at Council Rock. We've got school break coming up, but then school reopens on the 9th, then we have Edno School, and then we have our three ice cream social days, so on the 16th, 17th, and 18th. Any questions?
Questions for the board? Just another outstanding job. Thank you so much. I think I'm told next we have Assistant Principals Brooks and Paddock for TCMS.
Hi, everybody, so good to be here. Great job, Katie and Shirley, that was really nice to hear from you. And I'm really excited to be here with Sean. Danielle told us that we were presenting, and we got so excited, she gave us like this blank template, and I said, whoa, wait a minute, we got to add some more to this, because, she said you have 10 minutes. I said, all right, well, we, so we just said, we'll get it together. March has been a great month at 12 Corners Middle School. This is a brand-new shot of the middle school that Danielle shared, and we wanted to put it in here. And the first thing that I wanted to say before we get into anything is, I hope you hear the theme of connection and belonging throughout this. I was thinking about what Kevin was speaking of in his presentation, not necessarily the budget part, but I tuned in when it was about all the activities in the clubs. It was great, Kevin, by the way. And all of those things are what make schools so special, and that's what gets our kids through, it gets them coming to school, it gets our teachers through the days, and it's what makes it so fulfilling. And we really kicked things off with Music in Our Schools Month, and I had the opportunity, because I had some illness in December and January, and I missed a lot of the concerts. So I felt very, very honored to be able to go to the rehearsal for the Vocal Prism Concert, to go to District Strings, which was absolutely incredible, and to also hear all of our bands. And it is, I put some stats up here, because I think it's really important to see how many kids at the middle level are involved in music. It, it makes a huge difference, and we have some really, really talented students. Band, there were 12 students in seventh and eighth grade that were all county selections. Choir, there were four students, orchestra, 13 students, and then they have the All County Festival for grades four through six, and there were 16 band, five chorus, and nine orchestra. I also wanted to say that during the District Strings, I had an opportunity to raise and wave the flag, and I did that with Colleen and Tom, which was pretty neat, because I'd never waved a flag like that, and it was, it was just really fun to be in the middle of that. So the Festival of Ideas, we had approximately 700 kids from FRES and from TCMS that participated this year. There were over 70 workshops, some of them are listed up there, and many of these presentations are done by adults in the community, but then there were some students that did these presentations as well, and I think that that's really great when kids go and they have an opportunity to learn from older kids. And I think about all those years ago, when Martha Scaramano came up with this as a vision, and the fact that she is still cheering this amazing event, it just says so much for this community and their loyalty, and how much it means to all of our students. The Brighton Believes Day of Caring, I don't know if there's been a day that I've been more proud at 12 Corners Middle School. So this really was the vision of Katie Falter, who was one of our social studies teachers, and Jen Kramer, who was one of our PE and health, health teachers. And the theme this year was Connections in Bloom, and it was about connecting people over generations. And so Katie and Jen, if you know Katie and Jen, they are tireless workers, and they started this in August. I mean, it was planted actually as a little seed, I'm sorry that I'm using that, but I had to, it was just perfect. And they worked with four residences, four senior residences in Brighton, The Legacy, The Friendly Home, The Gables, and Valley Manor. And then what they established were these pen pales, 24 different homerooms had a pen pal, the kids wrote back and forth with the seniors, and then we had some of the seniors come in, we had a reception, and then all of the kids in the building planted little seedlings, and they will then be giving those to the homes, so that when they look at their windowsills, they have something to brighten their day. And to watch the kids with the seniors, it just, it just melted. And to watch the kids with the seniors, it just, it just melted your heart. I mean, everything went so beautifully and I was absolutely, I just can't, don't have enough great things to say about that day. And Lit in the Library. So I don't know if any of you have had a chance to stop over to the middle school when this is happening. Katie Lambert came up with this idea. This is the sixth one that she's done and in honor of the eclipse, she had former FRES librarian Andrea Coke come and she led a book discussion on Eclipse Chaser, Science in the Moon's Shadow. And there were 15 to 20 students that attended during when. They were all able to listen to her, to have pictures with her and just really get excited about the eclipse. It's such a huge event and I know that we have a lot of talk about it, but this Lit in the Library has been a great idea and Katie has covered so many different topics and it's allowed staff members to go in and present on different topics. And there are things that kids might be like, huh, I didn't know that they knew so much about that. And the connections that were formed there and continue to be formed are really amazing. And then just good times with our TCMS faculty and staff. So we have a pretty competitive staff. Sometimes it gets a little bit out of control. Secret Shamrock is something that we did just to get people, you know, give them something kind of fun to do for one another on St. Patrick's Day. But then Danielle came up with rock, paper, scissors. And each staff member was given a string of green beads. Well, we had some people that weren't there on the day that this was happening and those beads quickly were taken and by staff and put around their necks so it looked like they won. So what you had to do, Sean, can I borrow you a minute? You had to find the person with beads and then you would play a game of rock, paper, scissors. And if you won, you got the beads. Well, there was, kids are coming up, they're giving beads to the teacher. It was, it was really, really a good time. I don't know if we ever actually determined a winner because there were a lot of shenanigans going on. One of the other things we did was we had a snack cart. We actually had two of them. So we had students deliver treats to the staff during the school day. So we had a morning run and then we had a later day run and the teachers didn't have to go anywhere. The cart came right up to their room and they were able to take something of their choosing. We also have been doing March Madness and so the homerooms have been filling out, they filled out a March Madness bracket. Jessica Padilla and Jason Wasserman are tallying all the points and we're having a really good time with that. And our wellness committee has been working hard to really come up with different events for, for the staff, for students, and just to continue with the fun.
Take over from here. So continuing on with the thing, we had the Washington DC trip for the seventh graders. So here you can see a few photos. Obviously there's way more, couldn't fit them all there. We did, we just got back, I feel like last night, but we just got back last Friday around 11:30 in the snow blizzard that was here. The kids had a lot of fun. We did a lot of sightseeing. I feel like we visited every monument there was. They were very tired, but very good sports about it. Yeah, the kids had a lot of fun, a lot of night vision required for a lot of our, not for a lot, for some activities, but we were very lucky to have good weather. So no precipitation at all. One of the mornings was pretty cold, but again, no rain, no snow, so the kids were very happy. They ate all the junk food that they could find. It was a lot of their first time in Wegmans alone, so they were able to pick up food, but like a lot of them came up to me like, okay, now what do I go to pay? So that was fun. That was cool, but we had a good time. Our kids that weren't able to go on to the trip for different reasons or just didn't want to go on the trip, we had local field trips and activities going on. So they did Wild Means Nature Center. They went bowling. We had activities going on back at the school with their technology teacher, Mr. Darling. A lot of rock painting and building and things of that nature. So were no seventh grade classes going on between those days. The kids stayed behind and came to the school. They were able to go on field trips and participate in different activities with their friends. Then we have Science Olympia and E3. So with these two things, they're both STEM focused. With E3, the students work together to build, build different mechanisms. The point of that is teamwork and focusing on the engineering component. At the end of that, they participate in a fair at RIT. So these are pictures of them working in progress together to build different ramps and things of that nature. So again, STEM focused and Science Olympia is not focused solely on engineering. It's more of a STEM component, so it encompasses all the sciences together. And again, focuses on teamwork and collaboration to get to a final goal. Activity nights. So we have two activity nights for sixth grade and seventh grade, one for eighth grade. With that activity night, each one has a theme. These are pictures mostly of the sixth and seventh graders. This theme was Hawaiian Night. In activity night, they have our gym, we turn off the lights and have a DJ, so that's kind of their dance floor. And our big gym, our small gym, they do basketball. We turn the cafeteria into like a game thing, so you have bingo, different games like that. And they have snow cones in there and our atrium becomes an arcade, so we come out, bring out the ice hockey. And the kids just basically get to run around safely and play with their friends from the same grade. We have, PTSA helps organize that. And dodgeball. This is our flyer made by one of our counselors at the middle school. As you can see, she cut out each of our heads and put it on a body. And then we have the students, the picture below to your right, we have the students made us our T-shirts. By May, we just, they just use a lot of duct tape. Cut out our flyer and duct taped it to our shirts. So, but it came together and one of our secretaries in the main office bought headbands and wristbands that matched the duct tape, so we were pretty stylish. We didn't win, but we put up a good fight. That was my first time playing dodgeball and I was able to get Matt out. We didn't win, but our students all showed up and supported us. When we won our first match, did we win against?
No, it wasn't Council.
Oh, it was FRES.
No, high school.
Okay. Well, we, well, we won against one of the schools. The kids stormed the court. I have a video, see if I can play.
It was really awesome.
This is not the national championship.
This is not March Madness. This is just dodgeball. So that's my, that's my intro to dodgeball. Our kids were pretty excited for us. It was a good time, good night. I didn't know that, I thought it was just gonna be like a small thing, intern in a high school and then I came to high school and like the stands were full. So that was a good introduction for dodgeball for me, but it was fun. And then upcoming events, March 25th through 28th, this week is Spirit Week at the school. Today was School Color Day. March 25th also started our modified sports. Our spring recess starts Friday and goes through April 5th, April 8th, eclipse, so we don't have school. April 10th, we're back. April 9th, April 10th, we're gone again for Eid. April 15th, our marking period ends. April 17th, 18th, we have our New York State test in, starting with ELA. A few concerts, not a few, just one concert, Chamber Orchestra. April 20th is the spring dance for the eighth graders. 25th, Recenter is gonna be visiting our school and 26th, we have Superintendent's Conference Day. Any questions?
Questions from the board. Just another outstanding presentation and a lot going on in March and April at TCMS. So thank you very much. Last but not least, for BHS, we've got assistant principals Edwards, Lincoln, and Como.
Perfect. Good evening. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to, to come and celebrate March with everyone here today. And I think our, my colleagues perhaps showcased it and said it best, this theme of connection and belonging, being a major part of our month at Brighton High School as well. Yes, March is a long month, but it's also a month of routine and stability and you really get to see kids thrive in their classroom communities and really see that comfort level day in and day out. So as much as we're gonna showcase a lot of the fun stuff that went on in the high school all this month, I think those day in and day out interactions are really fun to watch throughout the month and seeing kids do so well. We started our month with our winter pep assembly and I was most impressed with our executive student council and advisors who really worked this year to make our assembly as inclusive as possible and really representative of our high school. Our pep rallies have always brought a great deal of energy, but our students wanted to incorporate as many events as humanly possible to showcase all the great things that are going on in our building. And so we brought up our first honorary Brighton Bruin Award to Mr. Giuliano over at Bagel Land to honor him for all his great contributions to our community. It was really fun to honor him. The kids were so excited to see him. We also honored our visual and performing arts groups, whether it was a shout out to our SpongeBob crew. We had one of our first seat trumpeters perform the National Anthem. We're also able to honor a few of our artists as well. So it was just a great event to bring everybody together. And we were still able to showcase some of the, the very historic games that our students love to play at the pep rallies. If you didn't know, musical chairs gets pretty intense at Brighton High School. It's all fun and games for those chairs to come out, but our students had a really nice time. It was fun just to showcase all the great things going on in our building throughout the winter. Matt, you wanna talk a little?
All right. Hello, everyone, and thanks for having us tonight. Brighton Believes Day was a big day at Brighton High School too. It was great hearing what went on at all the other buildings. Our students really did a ton to do a lot of work and charity for a lot of different groups. This slide is just too much to read, but it just shows some of the great things that went on. We had a ton of food donations. Each of our classes did a different activity. There was letter writing, there was socks, making the non-slip socks for hospitals and for nursing homes. And the whole building for an hour and a half in the afternoon was just really amazing to see. Our job was to walk around and make sure that all the different rooms had what they needed and that, you know, obviously we wanted to make sure things were going well and the kids were just 100% in. It was so great to see the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches being made in the gym, all kinds of assembly lines set up to put together all these different packages in the lower gym and in all the classrooms. Really the only thing we had to do was go get more stuff because they were ready to do more. They were so into it. It was really fun to see. There's Dr. Hall getting everybody organized on the right there in room 262. Definitely want to thank the PTSA and their volunteers for helping us to get organized. I want to thank the sports teams and the clubs that took leadership of all this and met many times ahead of time to really get everything sorted out and ready to go for that Brighton Believes Day afternoon. We did throw a dodgeball picture in here too because we can't leave that out. Our staff didn't, didn't play as well as they might have wanted to, but our seniors did win, so we gotta make sure we try that. And we can get that golden ball from you guys tomorrow. And there's some of those no slip socks going on on the right and the peanut butter and jelly sandwich is being made on the left. There's just some of the donations that we received over the course of that whole week. And we want to thank Mr. Dave Luce and Frank Novelli for getting that all packed up and off to the Brighton food cupboard. They were a big help as well with everything. All right, I'm gonna turn things over to Ashley.
So as Mark said earlier, the month of March, we do talk a lot about it being a long, a long month, but also in talking about stability and routines and creating those for our students. And one of the things that's really important to us at the high school are some of these proactive conversations that we've been having with students in our seminars. And so we take the time, we divvy up all the class sections between the four of us and we meet in really small groups with our students to talk about all of these things you see listed at the top, our Dignity for All Students Act, bullying, harassment, social media, et cetera. Pretty heavy and sensitive topics, but I think what we've learned and what our students have shared with us is how important these conversations are and that we're not afraid to have them with our students. And so I think we had a lot of positive feedback and students came to us afterward and showed that they felt much more comfortable. And talking about like, we all have an obligation to create this Brighton High School mission statement that we're all looking, striving to achieve within our community and that it's really important for each of us to speak up. If you hear something, see something, say something. And they're really doing that. And even when we're making phone calls home to our students' families, that they're sharing that they're hearing the same things at home, they're hearing those messages and appreciate that we're also talking about them here. So again, some of the other ways that we do that and just like the nice small groups that we're able to connect with our students in that way that we don't always get to do in our administrative roles is really nice. And then one of the most important pieces of the packet that we give to students so that they have this resource outside of this conversation, highlights our information, Dr. Hall's information, the Safe Schools Helpline and the importance of that, the opportunity that it can be anonymous and that really we just want to hear from you so that we can keep everybody safe is really important for our students to hear. And again, all the reasons why they could be reporting something to us and, you know, not a day goes by that a student doesn't speak up. So we're really fortunate in this community that that is something that we believe in and our students believe in and feel comfortable coming to us for help. One of the other things that we've been tackling lately and we've made this campaign around attendance at the high schools specifically, we've seen a drop in student attendance and some of this chronic absenteeism increase since COVID certainly, but students are just dealing with a lot. It's a really tough time to be a young adult and navigating high school with everything that they are. And so we started this attendance campaign and we're looking at kind of a threshold for days in which a student is late to school or days that they've missed in total. And our, our objective in those conversations that we're having with individual students isn't to hammer them with consequences and to create a punitive consequence, but rather to create this safe space and a supportive conversation, like what are the barriers for getting you here to school and how can we help you? And so I think that we also have found those conversations to be really fruitful and beneficial. And when we're having those conversations with students, we're also able to connect with them in a way that we weren't able to do before that. And we're seeing our attendance improve a lot. You can see that the numbers have increased a lot since COVID, but still relatively speaking, our numbers are really good here in Brighton. And again, I think that's a testament to all the work that everybody in this room and outside of this room is doing within the community to support our students and get them here each and every day. And so again, this is speaking to our campaign that we started. Guardians are saying that they're, they're grateful that we're having these conversations with their students and that they need our help too. So we're seeing really great things come from our attendance campaign this year.
I'm glad we included this picture. It's a fun one. Just another quick reminder, we said a temporary goodbye to our gymnasium this past week as it undergoes renovation that we're really excited about. But our students created and led their own three-on-three basketball tournament during flex over the last couple of weeks. It was really fun. The kids played really hard and they had like their own draft to develop teams and everything was really great to see. And so we thought we'd include this picture, but like I said, good time had by y'all. Maybe some mixed reviews from fifth period teachers who had to smell these sweaty kids in their classrooms, but otherwise it was a really good time, so good things.
Mark, can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
What's interesting is not knowing everybody in that picture, I want to say to you, that's Reggie Anderson, our thousand point scorer with two non-basketball players.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not telling you that those other two don't have game. I can't speak with any authority on that, except the point is like including everybody and just playing with friends as opposed to just being basketball players or playing. That's pretty cool. It says a lot about those kids.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, flex basketball is a great vibe. If you come in, there's like a, a lot of times like, you know, 70 to 100 kids and they're playing. It's packed house and they're all enjoying each other's company and they have like their own set routines. It's kind of fun to watch.
Oh, yeah. One of the great opportunities we had was Brighton High School alum and City Court Justice Van White invited a group of our students to visit the Hall of Justice. So we had about 22 students from our Black Student Union, our law and government classes as well as our mock trial. Visit them at the end of February. They toured the Hall of Justice. They were able to speak with the different judges, spoke to attorneys. They even went through their own mock trial and attended criminal and drug court. And at the end, Judge White honored our BSU with a plaque, which was really nice, and some pictures to kind of highlight and speak to those. There's Justice Van White with Benapoku on the right hand side there. And this is our mock trial group, which exciting information, tomorrow night, they'll be competing in our county championships against Penn Field, I believe. So go Bruins.
Just a lot of similar dates that my colleagues brought up for things to look forward to coming the month of April. But our historically black college and university trip is on their way to DC as we speak. Very exciting and we're really looking forward to a, to a fun April, highlighted by some other fun events like April 18th, our students are going to go visit the authors of All American Boys, which a couple, maybe a couple of classes in literature. which a couple, maybe a couple of classes in literature circles, and also in our Spire program have read that book, so they're really excited to see those authors, a really cool, unique opportunity. And lastly, excited for Recenter and DEI work come Superintendent's Conference Day. So looking forward to April. Thanks so much for your time tonight, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Questions or comments from the board? I'll make two. I can think of nobody more deserving of an honorary Bruin than the guy who's running Bagel Land, which is an institution, so that's a great call. And secondly, I'm sure the work's difficult, but I think that focus on absenteeism and making connections with kids is critically important. So talking about it and measuring it is the way you start to get it, so I appreciate the work you all are doing to sort of get after that and help those kids, those kids are the ones likely who have the most needs, so thank you for that. I'll let Dr. McGowan comment in a second, but I'll just say on behalf of the board, you all as a collective group of assistant principals did so much better than the principals normally do.
I think they should do it every month.
You have set a bar for them that it will be difficult for them to get over, but thank you very much for your time, we're grateful to hear from you, and we're grateful for all the work you do in this school, so thank you again.
Not sure I could say it much better other than how much you appreciate it, and how proud we are of your work, and how much you make it happen each and every day. Thanks for presenting tonight, being a part of it, I think you're a part of it each and every day. We have a relatively flat team and organization, so although you're not here every month, your work is here every month and is presented on often, so it was good to put a voice to that. So thank you very much for being here, great work.
Moving on the agenda, you've seen the approval of the resolution authorizing the annual budget vote, which as Dr. McGowan said, is obviously the 21st, and all of the necessary decisions around that day, election workers and things like that. Any questions with regards to this resolution? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue, all those in favor? Next up is the approval of a bid evaluation for door hardware and installation for some French Road Elementary School, as is our case with our normal safety and security checks, we found ways to get better in this particular case with door hardware in French Road. Any questions or concerns about this work? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Carolyn?
Second.
Seconded by owner, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. We have some first-read policies here. First, for instruction home hospital or instructional instruction, that's A. B is Policy 3410, I'm sorry, for A, it was Policy 8450. For B, it's Policy 3410, and again, these are all first reads, Community Relations, Code of Conduct. And then for C, Policy 8340, Instruction, Instructional Materials and Non-Public School Students Textbooks. This is a first read, we'll be able to approve them at the next meeting. Any questions with regards to this first read? Motion to approve the first read?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Christina, all those in favor? In regards to the consent agenda, we've got a series of fundraising activities, the Friends of Arts in Brighton, concessions at the BHS Auditorium on April 26th and 27th, and also at the, I'll skip over that, that's the Board of Education Executive Budget hearing, that's tonight, that's okay, I think that moved around on here, I think I messed it up.
I can point out, it's the bottom of the page, it's the footer on the page, so.
Yeah, that's okay, that's right. Next is for B, field trip approval, speech and debate competition in Broggs, New York, that's April 12th to the 14th, and then the International Deca Conference in Anaheim, California, from April 27th to the 30th. And gifts, as is our practice, we read out loud the gifts. A gift from Dr. Tracy Glazer to the Brighton Central School District of an EOS Rebel T6 kit that includes two additional camera lenses, Commander Camera Steadying Pole and Tripod, Canon 430EX Speedlight Flash, Vivitar Long Distance Lens, Carrying Case, and assorted accessories. And then a gift from Jill Bowler to the Brighton Central School District of a Bach Trombone Mouthpiece. Questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Sue? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Christina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any final comments?
Just one, congratulations to our very own Dr. Ellison Rio, who is the curriculum leader, award winner for the Genesee Valley Association of Supervision Kirkdom Development. We know it here every day, it's just great to see it recognized across the region for the unbelievable leadership you provide, who you are as a human, you're trying to get me to stop talking, I'm gonna keep talking. What an incredible leader, person, and friend you are for all of us. So again, congratulations.
As always, we thank our tech team. Tonight, it's Mike, Bill, and Violet, thank you all for your work behind the cameras. It is always our clerk who puts everything together and lets this run smoothly, so thank you, Kim. With that, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.